Like hitting that gasser.
You're going to the ethics meeting, aren't you?
Two days in a row.
Apparently, I'm not the only one. Are we up? Call the meeting to order. Just as a reminder, if anybody wants to speak before the meeting tonight, please fill out one of the blue speaker cards in the back and give it to the city clerk, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Plod.
Here.
Councilmember Rigby.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Present.
Councilmember Laura Marburg. Mayor President Lamarcus.
I go by A.U. Present, absolutely.
Mayor DeSar.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Ed Moreno of the New Day Christian Church, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro-Ten Laramore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Mayor, I just want to thank you for your service and the privilege of being part of such an exciting and great city. Thank you for continually raising up for us, excellently with good hearts. Our privilege to continue to grant them your wisdom, your direction. I have the strength from your hand to fulfill this responsibility along with all the others they have in their normal life. While we let your presence and your power be felt and sensed in this place, we just continue to have your hand upon us as a whole city. It is my credit.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro-Ten.
If you will all rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to... Yeah, we're going to move on to item three, but before we do that, I'd appreciate if you could all join me in a moment of silence for the police officer from Whittier that was murdered this week. Thank you. We're going to move to a closed session. Have we got everybody? All right, we're going to reconvene, and do we have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council did conduct a closed session authorized under the government code, and the closed session title was Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation/Initiation of Litigation Pursued to Paragraph Four of Subdivision T of Section 54956.9. There are two potential cases that were discussed. At this particular time, there's no reportable action. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Captain Rossi from Fire Station 27 to accept the public -- or the Safely Surrender Baby Month proclamation.
On behalf of the City of Eastvale, I'd like to present this proclamation for the safely surrendered baby of ours, come on, February 2007 to you, and law was enacted in 2006, and one of those people who did this, so he was taken under the local fire station.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Captain Rossi. We're going to move to item 10, City Manager's Report. We're going to move that up to the front of the agenda. City Manager?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and council members, members of the public. Thank you, first of all, for moving this item to -- up in the agenda. The reason for doing that is, is I wanted to really share that today's a big day in Eastvale. You might be wondering, why? What's the big deal? Well, today is the day that Eastvale's Fire Station 31 came online. At eight o'clock this morning... So, at eight o'clock this morning, we started running calls out of Fire Station 31. I really want to commend the council for your wisdom, your very conservative fiscal approach, and your dedication to making public safety a number-one priority. And this is a direct result of the fruits of your labor. This started back in 2011 with trying to find a piece of land in the City of Eastvale that would result in increased services for fire, and address the growing needs of the community, the growing population. And so, after doing a analysis with CAL FIRE based on calls for service, it was determined that this portion of Eastvale would be best served to locate a second fire station. So, we have Fire Station 31. If you recall, we went through several meetings, lots of design meetings, public input, and this is the initial rendering of our fire station, number 31, on the corner of Selby and Chandler. And this is this morning, our first run going out of the door at Fire Station 31. So, congratulations, council. This is the first project that the City of Eastvale can say is truly ours. It's our fire station. It was built with our funds. It was built with our staff working on the project. It was built with the input from our citizens. So, this is truly the first for us. It's a very proud day here in Eastvale. Very exciting. And again, congratulations for your hard work and dedication.
Is that our new engine?
Yes, sir. That's the second part. So, with the opening of a new fire station, of course, we had to plan ahead, over a year ahead on the fire station -- or on the fire engine, because it does take time to build those. The fire engine alone was approximately half a million dollars. So, yes, that is our brand-new fire engine coming out of our brand-new fire station.
All right. 31 is now in service.
That's right. Station 31 is now in service. So, the fire engine will be at our next council meeting for everyone to come and check out the latest and greatest Spartan. It's a Spartan engine. It's the newest model, and has a lot of bells and whistles that the older engines do not have. So, that will be here at the next council meeting for council and our citizens to check out. Wanted to show, again, this is a commitment from the council, and by direction of your long-term goals and objectives towards public safety in the City of Eastvale. If you recall, the land acquisition, as you can see, was approximately $600,000. We have furniture, design and engineering, construction. Our total budget on this building was $7.4 million, almost $7.5 million. Some of the funds came from our structural fire fund. Some of them came from the Community Development Block Grant, which allowed us to do some of the infrastructure in the immediate area. So, money came from our zone to flood control to do some of the storm drain work, and of course, our gas tax. So, again, approximately $7.5 million was budgeted for this and ultimately will be spent. That does not include the fire engine, which was purchased out of a different fiscal year in advance, in preparation for this. There's also increased staffing, which was also budgeted for, and the staff began operating as of January 1st, so that we're not kind of timed with the billing cycle appropriately. So, they have been helping out at Station 27 until this came online. So, I just wanted to show you this. This project is -- has finally come to fruition. I'd also like to invite all of our citizens to join us on April 19th at 10:00 a.m. at Fire Station 31, where we will have our grand opening celebration. And it will be a really special day, a lot of great people there, and we'll have some special events that day. We're looking forward to everyone joining us. And so, again, congratulations to the council and the citizens of Eastvale.
Congratulations. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. And lastly, I would like to thank all of the staff that worked very hard on this project, particularly Joe Enderwan, and other staff in the Public Works Department, Aleah, obviously Silvio, and Justin from CAL FIRE. Excuse me, Sylvia Alonzo, our division chief, Battalion Chief Justin Skribner, and all of the staff at Fire Station 21 that have participated in this. So, thank you very much for all your efforts.
Excellent. Hey, do we have any idea when the orchard will be ready?
The orchard, Mr. Peddinger's orchard at 27. I will have to defer to Joe and Aleah on that, that maybe they can update you during staff comments. So, I, again, thank you for the opportunity to present this. I know it was a little out of order, but I wanted to make sure that the citizens here this evening were aware.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie's not here, so we won't have a student liaison report. We're going to move on to six public comments. So, if you do have an interest in speaking, and you haven't already filled out a comment card, please do so and give it to the city clerk. You can address the council on items within the subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. And please take two minutes.
We received one public comment, from Robert Hetrick.
Mr. Hetrick.
Thank you very much. Good evening, State Council. Nice to see you guys. I'll keep this uncharacteristic and short. The reason why I'm here today is I'm here as a representative of the concerned citizens of Eastvale, particularly homecoming and off-land, the ongoing issue of the birth tourism homes within our city. And we were just coming here tonight to see what steps have been taken to address the issue, and if there's been any updates as to what those steps are, and if there's anything that we can do to further assist the city council in addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think they can refer to the minutes from the last meeting. Is there anything in there? Or the recorded council session for -- last session, there should be -- there were some comments and an update. And I know we -- I don't know if our council members have made an appointment yet for the committee, so I know that's to come. Yes, sir.
There will be, during our council communications and committee reports, we'll have a brief report on the ad hoc committee. And there was, I think, a city attorney has some information about the last city council meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Rigby. As you know, we had a closed session last time, and it was reported in open session that, based on the fact that there is ongoing investigation with maternity homes, the city council has instructed the city manager to not provide any further updates in order to prevent jeopardizing those investigations by the agencies involved.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? That was it? Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to item seven, the consent calendar.
So, move.
Second.
Councilmember Plod.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Mayor President Lamarcus.
Aye.
Mayor DeSar.
Aye. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question regarding the last motion. Do we need to -- was the adjusted minutes that we were provided in the public was provided in the back, that's included in that motion, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
We'll go --
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to item eight. There are no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move on to council business. Item 9.1, Public Safety Commission Appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask forward Rich Wall. He is who I would like to put forward for as the Public Safety Commissioner. There were a lot of very qualified candidates, and in fact, it was a very difficult decision to make, but I know that Rich is going to do an amazing job. So, Stephen, do you want to take over? All right, thank you, sir.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. By state journey. Do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, from all enemies, sworn and invested. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge subpoenas upon which I am about to enter. Roger.
Congratulations. All right, with that, we'll move on to item 9.2, Investment Portfolio Update from PFM Asset Management. Mr. Riley?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. We are going to have a date today from our investment advisor, PFM, about our investment portfolio. On January 13th, 2016, the city council approved the selection of PFM Asset Management LLC to be the city's investment advisor, as part of the role as the city's investment advisor. PFM does the annual review of the city's investment policies and life of California government code changes and best practices. In fact, we will have that presentation, we will submit that investment policy review probably in May or June of this year. On May 11th, 2016, based upon PFM's review of the city's investment policy cash flow analysis, the city council approved the recommended investment strategy to maximize the city's investment revenue in accordance with the California Government Code. The update that PFM will give today is to report on the status of the investment strategy today and to give any overview of the current investment strategy and the current investment client. But just before PFM comes, and today there is Sarah Beecham and his son from PFM to do that presentation, just wanted to give a brief breakdown of the city cash policy, just to let you all know of the cash that we have. It showed up in our treasury report today through December 31st, and we have approximately $57 million. Wanted to show how that's broken down, and then to show where the PFM component comes to play in that. Thank you. Okay. Just to give you an idea of, I know $57 million sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but it's not just money out there that we can just spend and use however we want to. Of that, you'll see that $31.5 million is restricted, and that's money that is non-discretionary per the law. That's money that we give for our gas tax funds, we give for our major aid funds, CDDG. We can only use that money based upon how the law tells us that we can use it. We can't just use it for everything. In addition to that, there's money that is committed and set aside per a formal action of the city council, and it's money set aside for our city hall, and different things like that. That's a million four. Then there's what's called designated or assigned money. This is money that has been discussed. It's not a formal action yet from council, but it's discussed that these are things that we want to do with this money. We have an emergency contingency of about $6.2 million. We have to set aside approximately 50% of our budget as far as expenditures to meet city obligations, and that's $10.8 million. And then, we have a issue with the county riverside related to, I don't know what's the best word to say.
No, vehicle license fee, S.P. 109.
S.P. 109. And so, until this is settled with the county riverside, we have about $5 million set aside related to invoices from 2014, '15. So, that designated assigned money is $22 million. So, that's the unassigned, or money that can be used for one-time things, like we showed you mentioned earlier, that we bought a fire truck, we can use it for that, for other special one-time projects, about $2.3 million. And that leaves us a grand total at what we have on December 31st, $57.2 million. Now, to bring that $57.2 million, to explain how that relates to what we show in the schedule of investment, or what we show in our treasury report, we have about $1.2 of the $57 million in money market accounts. We have $12.8 million in pooled investment accounts. That's what's called a lake account or a local agency investment fund, which is something that is managed by the State of California, the Treasury Department. Then we have the PFM Managed Investments, which is a report that will be coming shortly. That's $34.4 million. And then we have our checking account, $8.7 million. So, that $57.2, you know, the previous slide, we showed how that's broken down as far as what we can use of that money, or how we can use it, and it just tells us where those money funds are located. And with that, I will turn things over to our PFM investment advisor, who'll give us updates on the investments that they manage, and then, as a physical focus investments, total of about $34.4 million.
Hi, my name is Henry Sun. I'm the senior analyst at PFM that serves as your account. I'll jump right in. I'm flipping to page one, some really high-level economic statistics. Let's flip to the next page here. On page one, I just have key themes in the economy for 2016. We saw modest economic growth. GDP growth came in at 1.9%, which is a little lower than economic estimates of 2.5% growth in 2016. On the job round, we created an average of about 180,000 jobs per month. The job market is very strong right now. We have unemployment at about 4.7%, which is the lowest it's been since 2008. Very positive. And inflation is trending upwards, although it's under shock federal reserve's expectations for 2%. Their preferred gauge coming in at 1.7% year-over-year. It is trending upwards, and the expectation is for that to push to increase and move in the right direction. Flipping over to page two, we have a chart showing U.S. Treasury yields, two U.S. Treasury yields in the yellow, we had it in the fourth quarter of '16. I'd just like to point out, on the left side of that yellow box, volatility leading up to the presidential election. And after the results of presidential election, we saw yields increase sharply, and on the back end, that fourth quarter, we saw yields spike again, with the Federal Reserve decided to raise short-term interest rates. On page three, we have the chart showing the U.S. Treasury yield curve. So, yields available on U.S. Treasuries, the maturities ranging from three months all the way up to five years for different days. Just to keep a brief, a quick summary, four over four, we saw interest rates rise sharply across the board. However, if we look at yields year-over-year, although interest rates have increased, the change upwards really is not all that drastic. So, on page four, the four, where do we expect interest rates to go going forward? The Federal Reserve expects there to be about three rate hikes in 2016, 2017, excuse me. The market's a little more conservative, expecting about two interest rate hikes. And really, the consensus is that there's not a great chance of rate hike until June. However, the Federal Reserve has come out saying that they'd rather raise rates sooner than later. So, some large banks have come out and said that a rate hike in March is not completely off the table. So, looking forward for the U.S. economy, PFM's perspective is pretty much in line with the general economic expectations, in that we expect economic growth to increase going forward, we expect inflation to trend upwards in the right direction, and interest rates also to move forwards. But one thing that I would like to point out is, at this point last year, the Federal Reserve said that they were going to raise interest rates three to four times, and we know last year they were only able to raise interest rates one time at the very last possible minute. So, although we have plenty of people thinking about interest rates and trying to predict where they're going to go, we believe that it's very hard to say with any certainty when that's going to happen, and by how much interest rates will rise. And with that, I'll take any questions. I'll hand it over to Sarah, who will give the investment performance.
Councilman Rush?
No, I'm stretching.
No? Okay.
I'd like to talk briefly about your specific portfolio. So, on page seven of the report, we summarize the sectors in the given managed portfolio. The portfolio is primarily invested in government securities, U.S. Treasuries, and federal agencies. And over the quarter, you can see that... And over the quarter, you can see that little column there, there was quite a shift between treasuries and agencies, we added fourteen percent to that treasury bucket, and reduced the agencies up by twenty-two percent. And the reason for that is because earlier in two thousand and sixteen, federal agencies offered quite a bit of yield, additional yield over treasuries, because yields were falling in the first quarter of two thousand and sixteen, as Henry showed you on that chart, the two-year treasury yield. And so agencies were calling a lot of callable bonds, and they were replacing that supply with federal agencies, the KLA agencies that are not callable. And then additional supply came into the market via yield. That trend reversed itself in the fourth quarter as we started to see rates rise, and so we were actively changing the portfolio, living between agencies whose value was falling and treasuries who were providing similar or better yields than agencies during the quarter. The portfolio is also diversified across negotiable CDs, corporate notes, and asset-backed securities, so those are more credit sectors, very high quality, that are adding yield and value and return potential to the portfolio. And then diversification and the active management mentioned has actually helped generate quite a bit of performance in addition to the strategy or benchmark, which the city selected, and I'll show you that in a moment. So more of a graphical snapshot of the portfolio on page eight. You've got some statistics there on the left-hand side, showing you the par, the market value, and the amortized cost, and different measures of the balance and the value in the portfolio and management by PFM. I would point to the yield of that cost of one twenty-five. And we started off with most of cash coming out of the local agency investment fund, and that fund at the time was earning about sixty basis points. So I think as we present that time, the expectation was that we would essentially be able to double the yield that you're getting on the portfolio, and we have done that. You can also see the average maturity of the portfolio, about two or three quarter years, and the overall average credit quality is double A. And that duration and average maturity is consistent with the one-to-five-year strategy that the city chose, meaning that we keep the investments generally between one year and five years. Now, we show you performance on a total return basis, and since yields were rising over the last two quarters, total returns have been negative. Now, what that means is that the market value of the securities in the portfolio has been declining, because there's an inverse relationship between price and yield. And as we talked about, yields are rising, the market values are going down, yields are going up. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, it's simply a function of the market when you own fixed income securities, which is essentially what the city is limited to by the California Government Code and universal policy. So a lot of what you see here are unrealized or unforeseen changes in the market value of the securities in the portfolio, but what I would point to is that significant positive difference you're seeing between the total return of your portfolio and the total return of the benchmark that we're using. And so the portfolio has significantly outperformed the market, that market that we told us you want to perform like, and this is what you should expect to see or want to see in a market with rising rates. We are doing our job, if when rates are, total returns are negative, we are capturing less of that market impact on the portfolio. It's never fun to see negative returns, but this is the best outcome. And I believe that the finance department captures these results really on a realized basis, and they're reporting the actual income, and you realize gains and losses that are screwing on the portfolio based on our market activity. And in your treasury report, which is on the consent calendar, the city is significantly surpassing its budgeted investment income, which is the highest. And then you can see over time, on page ten, the sector allocation of the portfolio, and I'm just pulling to the chart at the bottom, as it becomes more colorful, and as those colors become more evenly distributed, that means that we're seeing more diversification in the portfolio, because these colors are different sector that the city is allowed to invest in. And the maturity distribution of the portfolio, again I mentioned before, is primarily invested in the one-to-five-year maturity range. The blue bar is the city portfolio that PFM is managing, the gray bar is the benchmark, and so you can see that it's relatively in line with the benchmark, where there are different allocations, which are strategic for looking at what points of yield provide the most value and targeting those. And the last few pages are the issue redistribution of the portfolio. We just want to let you know where the city has each of its allocations. The top four are all the treasuries and agencies, the government securities in the portfolio, and then as you get down to those corporate names, you're seeing no more than three percent in any one of those investments. And this is also just on the portfolio we're managing, so that allocation is actually smaller when you look at the overall city portfolio. And then you have those details in the portfolio, we'll be. That was everything that I had.
Councilman Plod?
Yeah, it's, actually it's not even a question, it's more of, you know, I sit on the, you know, with the mayor, just sorry, we sit on the finance committee, and, James, maybe if you don't want to put you on the spot, but this change has been a great change for Eastville. If you can throw kind of two numbers out, kind of for the benefit of the public, so I think it's important for them to know the benefit of changing, the benefit of changing investment groups. But when we first, when we were first, what was our budgeted, what was our budgeted gains on our investments versus what actually has happened? I can't remember the numbers, but they were pretty significant, and maybe to kind of throw that out there, you can kind of toot your horn, but it's, it's impressive, so I maybe want to share it, because...
What we had budgeted for the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen was eighty-nine thousand and seven hundred dollars in investment income return. At December thirty first, twenty sixteen, we had actually already brought in a hundred and sixty thousand and thirty-two dollars, which is actually a one hundred and seventy-eight point four percent, which is a hundred and seventy-eight point four percent over what we had budgeted for interest for the entire year, and this is only through six months. And so we're looking at probably doubling that amount, that one sixty over the next six months, which is bringing us close to over three hundred thousand.
Three hundred percent, yeah.
Just in interest for the year, so.
Which would be a, maybe like a three hundred plus percent gain, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I definitely want to thank the finance committee and the council for giving us the direction, because we spent time last year talking to various investment advisors, we chose PFM, which I have the privilege to work with at the city in Lake Elsinore. They do great work, they only deal with public funds, they're not doing other weird stuff like derivatives or other industry things like that, they make sure we follow the government code, and, you know, I'm just really happy for the city, and that's money that we can use for other special projects, other things that we want to do that's over and above what we had already budgeted.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this?
No comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just receiving files, yeah.
Would so move?
Second.
Councilmember Plod?
Yes.
Councilmember Reapie?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Philson, one more?
Aye.
Mayor Resick?
Absolutely.
All right, we'll move on to nine point three, solar-powered receptacles project overview and approval of memorandum of understanding. Mr. Rodriguez?
Getting your request to be pulled in.
Okay. We, can I get a motion?
Motion to continue?
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, do you, is there a particular date that you want to bring this back, or are we done?
We would like to bring this item back to the council, either at the first meeting in March or the second, so it would be in the month of March.
Then I'd offer a substitute or amend the motion to...
So I would probably...
Bring it back in March.
Make the motion for the second meeting in March. I would amend and move to continue to the second meeting in March, whatever that is on the calendar.
Second.
Councilmember Plod?
Yes.
Councilmember Reapie?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Philson, one more?
Aye.
Mayor Resick?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, we'll move on to nine point four, pavement management system update.
Good day, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening we have pavement management program update for you. It's pretty much information that will be delivered to the council, and what we're doing in the public office department, especially our three roadway networks that we have. The fact is that we have hundred and sixty-nine, hundred and sixty-nine centimetre miles of pavement in Eastville, that consists of twenty-two miles arterial, eighteen miles collector, hundred and twenty-seven miles residential. The placement value of this roadway is hundred and forty-two million dollars. PMP pavement management program, specialized, it's a specialized asset management system that number one stores payment inventory and maintenance history. We assess current condition, predict future condition, and brief the needs. This is the grading category that we developed based on the PMP, called PCI, pavement condition and debt. It's very, it's a very good, although it's very poor. Now, our street right now is actually in the eighty-one to seventy-eight grading, which is way in up the scale here, it's a very good category. We did this study in October twenty-four for council directions, and then in April twenty-sixteen, we obtained this study, and then the average, the average PCI is seventy-eight. So it's still in a very good category. Just in comparison, this upcoming, based on data of the same California speeds, in twenty sixteen, the average PCI is seventy-one. In California, we're on state average PCI of sixty-five, so we are well at the average. These are the differences that we want to share with the council tonight, and this is river road of the project, before and after. And we have a slight on the project, this is before. And then this is before and after. You can tell this one, this is also a part of what we did to grind, but it's just semi-overlay again with the pavement. Slow seal and micro-surfacing is applied by a truck, that basically they have, excuse me, they have a brush, and then they would apply a coat over the, over the street. You can tell here from the same picture, the left one is after, and the before is the right one. We often do it lane by lane to allow the street to be open at all time. Backsealing is when there's a crack in the street, you can see here, the rest of the street is pretty good, so what we, we don't do overlayable, we don't do micro-surface, because we want to save the money for later. What we do is we backseal, in hope that in a couple of years, we can take the money and put, put micro-surface or slow seal. This is a, a street that is very good candidate for overlay construction. These arches are white lane, some of these have been fixed by the development of this city area of Providence, and some of them we have to do it ourselves. The balancing efforts that we're doing is, number one, is spending budgeted dollars prudently. We coordinate with development and utility projects diligently. We try to handle public criticism wisely, because people criticize us, saying, hey, this street is bad, how come you don't fix it, you know? We reply, we try to accept that, and then try to handle that and deal with this criticism. And also, we learn from the past experience. For example, in the past six months or eight months, we've been having large utility projects on Harrison and Citrus, the gas company, and it was just following the CDA waterline that happened about a month or two before, before that. So the criticism we receive is that, how come you don't coordinate those projects? We try as much we can to coordinate, we actually do it for this meeting, we try to manage the timing with the schools, and many other efforts that we do, but our type of task is very hard to do, the management within the two companies, because they have their own timing. So what we have done is we're trying to improve our projects in the future. We try to, say, we have in certain areas, CIP projects are in the book, and there is a utility work, this major one is in the area. We try to bid it out as close as possible, so, for example, in the near future, we're going to bid for Citrus Avenue between Hamner and Scholar and Southern, because the gas company just finished their work, and then it slowly had, the other half is, is in a bad situation. So we try to improve that coordination in the time and manner in the future. The project so far, we spent, since cooperation, we spent two million dollars. You may ask, how come you spent so much, so little in the past five years? It is because we try to coordinate, number one, because our city is pretty good, number two is because we try to coordinate the projects that we have, the development projects. So when there's a development project in the area, we try to hold our CIP projects, we let them do it for us, because they are required to develop, create, develop conditions. This is a street that we did in the past five years, Archibald, Sizemore, Chandler, River Road, and of course, as you can see, as you also slowly see on the other side of the city. The type of funding that we have in the city is, number one, gas tax funds. It's a tax imposed on sale, sale of gasoline, is used for street related projects, construction and maintenance. We also have measuring front, this is a represent having half a percent sales tax, and it's used mostly for local city construction. And we have this lane is that, but we always supply. It's another thing that, that's why we only spend two million dollars, because we try to tap to as many grants we can do, so we can delay the use of gas tax and measuring. So in sixteen seventy, we have one hundred million dollars in budget, still have new budget, and for measuring, we have one hundred million. Program for sixteen seventy, we have come around to the sixty-eight and based on, not holding, is portions of that area, it's overlaying the one way, that is about one hundred million dollars. We have residential subdivision, slow seal, one for seven million dollars, and a measuring. We have our period of light and polypers, micro-surface and survey at our overlay, is one hundred million dollars. The strategy for the PMP that we have is to identify the public investments, number three, is to balance in capital, pressure level, we value funding over five-year period, incorporate class of active maintenance sequence to give a plan. So every street has a different treatment based on the condition of the street. Recommend a three-year work plan for council approval. We're going to come back to you, council, in conjunction with the budget for seventeen seventy. We're going to continue to monitor and assess and evaluate the PMP we have. We're going to continue to work on coordination and give activities, coordination meeting with CIP projects, coordinating the city resources projects to development projects, we're coordinating the vacant maintenance centers with neighboring agencies on CIBs that we have, like the recent one that we have about a year or two, this is how it happened. We try to work both with Lennar, with the other neighborhood, with the GCHI on the other side. This is a map of the draft of two years. The map has different colors, solid line is the first year, the gas line is the second year. And this is the map for, the ground map for the places, obviously, that's not given on here. And the gold color is the previous year, I'm sorry, the red color is the previous year, the gold color is for the plan after this year. You can see most of the developments are pretty new in Eastville, but some developments have been around for a couple of decades or so. That concludes my presentation tonight, and I'll be able to answer any questions.
We have any public comment? Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe, thank you for this presentation, really appreciate it, a lot of good information. Just had a couple of questions on, I know I don't want to jump ahead, but with the... Just had a couple of questions on, I know, I don't want to jump ahead, but with the truck routes, proposed truck route, does that affect the, the roads? Will that help to, I guess, not damage some of our other roads? Will that help just to designate certain areas?
The track route, the way it works is that we apply certain DI, driving index on certain roadways, based on the track routes, we say, okay, this DI has a certain six, four residential streets, and maybe eight for planker streets. So those are the ones we use to determine what type of pavement is going to be, maybe for certain routes, for trucks. But as far as the pavement, we use that in a way that, based on the traffic that we see, we may do some kind of master planning projections, it's going to be like every five years, you have to be serviced as need for that overlay, and, and all sorts of things that's appropriate for that. But as far as under recommendations, I, we don't have them, we just look based on the PCI.
With Costco coming to town, do we have a estimated amount of revenue that we'll receive from that gas tax? Because that'll be applied to that budget also, right?
Exactly. The gas tax has been actually, a period of money been going down in the past few years because of the gas prices going down. But again, Costco coming to town, hoping a lot of people would buy gas on Costco. I don't have the projection, James, can you project how much is going to transfer when Costco gas station is in town?
It's, it's hard to say, mostly, we will see the effect more with sales tax from that one, you know, Costco having the gas station as well as doing, you know, the big box. So we will see, and they combine those together in the sales tax. I think the way the gas tax works, and maybe Joe can help me, is the way it's kind of allocated is based more on a per capita basis, and so it gets a little complex, but I know that that will be a factor, but a greater factor is they look at per capita through your city and determine how much is distributed. Like Joe said, we've been seeing a decrease since, you know, gas sales for, you know, less than three dollars now, whereas a couple of years ago, it was three fifty or something like that, so that is more of a bigger factor on the decrease on the monies that we get in for gas sales.
So just for my clarification, so the gas tax revenues that come in from the state are allocated based on the population, not on the actual sales of the gas in that area?
Okay. That's my understanding.
Okay.
On the, Joe, you mentioned that you had the grants as one of the revenue sources for the funding. Is, do you have an approximate value or amount on the grants that we've received for sixteen, seventeen, for this program?
For sixteen seventeen, for street projects, I would say about a couple million dollars.
Okay, good, great.
For example, the grant money we use on the examples I gave earlier, the slide number between Harrison and Summer, that's, that's the grant money we receive from, from that whole.
Last question, I promise. As I was looking at the, the map of proposed two-year resurfacing plan, one area that I was looking at, it was on Limonite as you approach Archibald, that area there. Looks like that's proposed in the next two years. Does that follow in plan with the homes being built there, as well as a future development on that corner, or is that timeframe all going together with, with each other's projects?
Yes. For example, here, we have vacant land just, just between Archibald and Harrison, we have vacant land both on the north side and the south, south side of the, of the city, and we are hoping the development is going to come in the next year or two. So in the, in the situation like this, the condition is pretty bad in some areas, so what we do is we try to do as minimal improvements as we can do, like for example, crack sealing. So at least there's no big cracks out there, and it's still viable, reliability is still acceptable, but we are waiting for the developer to come in so they can develop that for us and improve that as part of the condition. Same with Archibald here on this, on the side of the south white lane.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Protem Lerner?
Thank you, sir. Briefly, this has been a topic of discussion previously, but I finally came across nomenclature for it, and that's dig once policy, and what that does for, let's say, utility coming in and wanting to dig up the road with other neighboring agencies. The, the one that comes to mind is the Chino de Salter and what they were doing, and also then, I believe it was JCSD or the gas company, I forget which. But when we do that, do we have a plan to, outside of maintaining open communication, when something like one city, one agency moving forward, asking, hey, asking our neighboring agencies if they're going to also do the same thing, and how that relates to resurfacing, it comes to mind because you see a brand, they, they put in brand new road, what looks like brand new road, and then somebody else cuts it up and they only fix a little portion of it, so. I don't know what I'm getting at here, aside from, are, are we really making sure stuff like this doesn't happen?
We don't have a policy at this point, we just encourage them to come back, but the council always used to do, I tend to often, I tend to manage it, because this is a policy in the, in the next meeting, we bring the, the project, project. Normally, I'm just using, some, some using three years moratorium policy, some using five year moratorium policy, but the subject's, we're going to do that, the council is discussing that, doing that with council.
Okay. I don't, I don't like moratorium, but i- if you guys could come back and bring something back, that, that would be awesome. And affiliate with that, there has also been discussions, had conversations regarding putting in our own sort of infrastructure, maybe fiber optic cable. Could you also bring that back when somebody goes to dig up the street that we figure out how to put in something along the fiber optic cable to help move towards a smart city?
Or at least the conduit.
Or the conduit, yes, exactly. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Can I get a motion, receiving file on this?
Yes. Let's move.
Second.
Councilmember Brouck?
Yes.
Councilmember Ripley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor O'Gorman?
Aye.
Mayor Sackey?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, with that, we'll move on to nine point five, the draft truck route study update. Mr. Bradshaw?
City Council, almost a year ago, we formally forwarded a contract with Inter and Associates to do a truck route study update, and in this, in the beginning of the time, they have studied neighborhood policies, and also taken truck route counts, and also made a presentation to the public safety commission, and we also decided the planning commission, and requested commissioners for I-8 committee. We have a friend of yours referred tonight, and he gave a short presentation about the truck route study.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. All of the members of the council, my name is Fred Nedergaard, I'm a principal of Nedergaard Associates Inc. in Irvine. The purpose of this study was basically to come up with a proposed master plan for the truck routes within your city. As a part of this project, we conducted a comprehensive evaluation at ten major intersections within the city boundary, and we collected AM, midday PM, vehicle traffic, and also truck traffic, seven to nine, eleven to one, and four to six in the afternoon, on typical weekdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, during the months of September, August and September of last year. Then, we also performed a very comprehensive literature review, we investigated what's going on in your neighboring cities, such as cities of Ontario to the north, city of Chino to the west, city of Norco to the south, and city of the Ura Valley to the east. We looked at their rules, regulations, ordinances, and also, we looked at this thing from a global perspective, while looking at the state of California requirements, and also California vehicle code, with regard to the limitations on truck routes, truck weights, truck sizes. Based upon all those items that I mentioned earlier, after doing the, collecting all the data that we presented to the city, and they are basically within the public domain to be reviewed and to be perused by anyone that may be interested, we came up with a very comprehensive suggested truck routes for your city, for your municipal corporations, so that you, as the city council, you can, after reviewing this on your two separate meetings, you issue an ordinance, you ratify the proposed truck route, and then it would become the official truck route for your city. The, the purpose of the truck route has been to make sure that we provide some sense of continuity within the given circumstances, ID what's going on in your neighboring cities, when your neighboring cities such as, for example, city of Chino establishing, trying out and have a truck route that goes ultimately to state route seventy-one in Chino Hill, we wanted to make sure that we put those into perspective when we come up with any suggested truck routes. Number one, number two, we wanted to maximize the efficiency mobility, and last but not least, to provide public safety. We avoided from designating any truck routes within your residential area. Obviously, as you well know, all, all of your industrial parks happen to be northeast and northwest of your city, therefore, we were extremely cognizant to those zones, industrial zones, to make sure that all those future developers or existing facilities would be able to utilize the exist, the existing infrastructure with respect to the proposed truck routes. Number one. Number two, we are making a request from the city as a part of this study, that after reviewing the truck vehicle waste in your neighboring cities, for example, city of Chino Hills has a truck weight limit of five tons, city of Norco is five point five tons, city of Ontario to the north is five, city of the Ura Valley to your east, five tons. We came up with a proposed change in your city code from seven tons, which is fourteen thousand pounds, to five tons, which is ten thousand pounds. To put it in perspective, when you go to Los Angeles County, there are eighty-eight cities, you go to Orange County, there are thirty-four cities, we looked at all those cities, socio-economic demographics, to make sure that your city would fall into the same category, meaning that we are within the range of comparable cities. With all that said, to make it short, we are proposing for the change in your city code as an ordinance, that that seven tons to be changed to five. Two, actually, number three, the proposed routes are basically, the north-south routes happen to be, obviously, as you can see, Hellman Avenue to the west is, is going to be the first one that we are proposing to designate as a truck route. The second one would be Archibald, and you have a small portion here, which is River Road, that would connect the city of Norco to the city of East Mill, and ultimately to the city of Chino to the west, to be also as designated as a truck route, and also, here, we are proposing for Hamner Avenue to be designated as a truck route, and as you know, the name changes to North and all the way to go up there. These proposed roadways, north-south, happen to be major arteries in your city. Again, let me emphasize and underline the fact that we avoided all those residential areas within your city. So this is the most efficient, effective, and safest suggested truck routes within your city. Now, from, now, let me change, let me change my hat, from a legal perspective, you as a municipal corporation, up to a point, you can preclude entering trucks in your city. We've had, I've been involved, a lot of legal issues that mostly for the public agency defending it in force. In those cases, you as a city, you have limited power, if you will, to stop the truck route from your city. Because of the Act of Congress Commerce, you know, Act, we cannot preclude from, you know, proceeding on your major arteries. Therefore, we took that into account to make sure that we have east-west, and we established north-south arteries that would be officially designated as truck routes. And ultimately, once, after the second ordinance, with the city council ratification, then you can officially close truck routes or no truck routes at those arteries. Obviously, the ones that you see installed, who are the ones that at this juncture, we are proposing for being designated as truck routes. There's a very small segment here that we are proposing that be connects to Kimball Avenue to the city of Chino, and Limonite, obviously, to your west, so only this segment to be considered as a truck route, and I believe Joe mentioned that very carefully, right? Showed him correctly, with those proposed developments that are contemplated for that area of the city, then therefore, the city council can designate that as a truck route in the future, not at this juncture. So that's the only segment in the city that is subject to approval in the near future, but all other ones, all the major ones, would be the ones that at this juncture, we are making a recommendation to the city council to, you know, to approve as the designated truck route. And I've been told to make it short, I would be more than happy to answer any technical questions that may happen.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Rush?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the update. The, the truck route study is something I've been following for several years, even before incorporation, on the change from five tons, or from seven tons to five tons, and I don't know if we need to get into this later when the ordinance comes to force, but can you just briefly give us like an example of what that would change? What I see mostly anecdotally are, you know, the Robertson's ready-mix trucks barreling through the city, delivering concrete and things of that nature. So is there anything significant that would be precluded by that?
Coincidentally, based upon the comprehensive data collection program that we conducted to the city last year, we did not, frankly, we did not see any of those, you know, huge trailers that you see, that basically, we call them, you know, post-to-post, you know, trucks to be traversing through your city. I mean, obviously, you see a lot of them on I-15, Route 60, which is a desert, and the truck route in the city of California, but within your, you know, city limits, I don't think we've seen more than two or three mass at a given time, based on those four consecutive fifteen-minute intervals that we collected the data. So therefore, no, the proposed action that is presented to you at this juncture would not have any potential negative ramifications with regard to precluding one or two of those trucks that you mentioned, based upon posting the new truck routes, that they would be precluded from entering the city's.
I think Craig has a comment?
Trucks are allowed, if they're making delivery to a certain point, they're allowed to go to the most direct point, take the arterial to the most direct point. The concrete truck is like the worst-case example. They carry in cubic yards of concrete, which is actually, that's forty thousand, let's take note, it's forty thousand pounds, it's only just concrete. The truck itself, the concrete weighs about thirty, thirty tons. But they're allowed by law, make a direct point delivery, but they cannot traverse through the city, and pass through the city.
Okay.
Because they have a liability to fight.
Well, you bring me to my, my second point, which is, you know, in the future, after this gets established, obviously, it provides the foundation for enforcement, but what are we thinking for that aspect? Is this something that would eventually be enforced by sheriff's deputies, code enforcement, combination of the two? I mean, we don't have I mean, we don't have a, a commercial vehicle enforcement arm yet, so how do we go about?
If they were to try to look at enforcement through the sheriffs right now, we have, we see a problem with the identified problem at certain times, we have the sheriffs, uh, issue situations. Many of the vehicles would be very obvious if they were five tons. Five tons is really small, a mock truck, unless you use your, you know, six thousand pound truck.
That would be the, that would save the commissioner.
So, five tons, it's a little bit smaller, it's a little bit smaller.
But they're still gonna have to make a distinction between that, not only between the weight, but between, you know, oh, I'm just making a direct delivery versus, you know, using Limonite as a cut-through to get, you know, bypass the ninety-one or something like that. Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Councilman, Mayor Protam Laramore?
Did you?
Okay, Councilman Rigby.
Sorry, no, I just had a quick question on, with the truck route, is it posted signs? Is that how everyone's notified of it?
Yes, like any other cities, they have posted signs, um, you know, we call them R4-1. They're based on MUTC California, you know, many of uniform traffic control devices. They're pretty much standard all over the country.
Okay.
So, the same signs would be posted at specific locations. Typically, once you get into the city, there would be posted signs for truck routes or no truck routes. But all the major arteries that would come to your city, by default, they happen to be designated as a part of this program, so, so we're not gonna have any issues with those.
My only other question was, uh, similar to Councilmember Rush's, is just the enforcement aspect, but I think.
So, typically, the sheriff's deputies or the police departments, like in a lot of other cities, they can ticket those because they're gonna ask for identification. Okay, you transporting something, they have to show that, you know, they're just making one trip at a given time, you know, somebody's moving, you know, their stuff, it's a big truck, bigger than five tons. So, that would be the distinction.
Yeah, I think there are, there are some cities, you know, larger, Long Beach, things of that nature, that have a more significant issue, that, you know, dedicate additional resources and have, you know, dedicated officers or code enforcement officers. I know, uh, Commissioner Perea's familiar with that from his, you know, own personal involvement, so, I mean, that's maybe just something we need to tackle down the road.
I would agree with that, because I think, uh, standard, I don't wanna say standard, but just a sheriff's deputy, I don't know if they're, how much they're trained in, um, how much they focus on or know about, uh, trucks and transporting and, and that kind of stuff. So, I don't know if it's a, an additional educational thing for whoever is gonna enforce that for our city.
Lieutenant Forbes is back.
Lieutenant Forbes just came back. He's gonna add one thing. Once the council has got the ordinance, it's gonna be included in the truck department permit. We don't have that now.
Yeah, you're, you're answering my question, Joe.
We have issued a permit. And if, if someone travels in our city and they didn't have the permit, then they can get cited and forced. So, in the past, I've been talking to Lieutenant Forbes about this enforcement issue with the truck, and instead of.
Captain Rigby, uh, your, your question is a very, very question. The, the laws relating to commercial enforcement are, are very, uh, very complicated, and requires, uh, a lot of expertise, a lot of training, specialized equipment, et cetera. Uh, we do have a commercial enforcement officer that works out of the Oofa Station for another city. Uh, he is available, and he will be reviewing, uh, the final plans to make sure that any type of enforcement action we take is going to be aligned with, uh, state law and current case law related to, uh, commercial enforcement. Uh, he is also, uh, a vehicle, uh, equipment specialist, if you will, because he has a background in working in commercial, uh, trucks prior to becoming a police officer. So, we have that resource available to us for knowledge, with knowledge, which you can take your brains off if you like, but for, and he is cross-training our deputy sheriffs who are assigned to the traffic team on the most frequently violated laws as they pertain to commercial enforcement. And we've actually done commercial enforcement through our traffic team in, uh, issues in the northern part of the city, uh, as of last year, uh, but once we do get truck routes placed, we can set up a number of getting, uh, formal training.
Great, thank you.
There's certain grant funding that's available for that type of enforcement as well, isn't there?
Uh, there is, there is grant funding, and with commercial enforcement, it's not just our, our officer or itself. They have, uh, federal funding because it does deal with interstate trade and commerce. Uh, they work in task force, uh, commercial enforcement checkpoints, they work with CHP and about twenty other agencies throughout Southern California region, and they'll go from city to city or to the freeways oftentimes to do commercial vehicle checkpoints, et cetera. So, it's a, it's a regional team effort dealing with, uh, issues as they arise. But yes, there is, there is grant funding available.
So, once something like this was adopted in the future, it wouldn't be unheard of to see an agency like Long Beach in a commercial enforcement vehicle in Eastvale doing enforcement because they operate?
That would be part of it, it's a part of the checkpoint.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Fred, good to see you, sir. I, I didn't, I didn't re, Fred and I sit on SCAG together, uh, I didn't realize that you were with this organization, so, uh, very cool. But good, good to see you, sir. Um, I, I did have a question about some of the, the lines here, that, that makes sense, but, um, one thing that I did want to ask about is Belgrave. Um, I know there, could you explain why that wasn't chosen?
Oh, one of the criteria was, we, as a part of the comprehensive report that we have submitted to the city, we have all the statistics, we have all the raw data, we looked at those arteries or those roadways, and quite frankly, they did not meet the minimum requirements, meaning that the number of trucks were so limited, in some of, some of the locations, there were even zero. But we did have a lot of passenger cars, so therefore, there was no reason, number one, to make a recommendation to designate them as a truck route, and number two, again, we looked at establishing the continuity by default, if somebody's coming from any of your neighboring cities, then which route they would be using. So, based on those two factors, then we came up with that. And also, we looked at your, uh, your arterial classifications based on their functions. If they happen to be major arterial, then we took that into account by default. That means you're gonna have three to four lanes, you know, per direction, and it would make sense that those routes would be the safest routes for trucks to traverse versus, you know, those minor arteries that you have limited number of lanes, and then by us designating those and zigzagging through, it would not make sense to designate it as a truck route.
Okay. Uh, I, I guess, the issue is that they have slated South Ontario there to, uh, for development over the next ten years, and I, they're doing a master plan there. And the reality of traffic patterns, and I don't know how you would model this at this point, but traffic patterns are gonna change in that area, uh, once that development goes in, and, including roads that aren't there right now are gonna continue north. And I don't know how you get around that modeling question, but it, was that something you were thinking about while you were doing this?
Well, Lieutenant Laramore, what we have done basically was, based on the existing, that when you, as a city, wanted to designate any routes for trucks, we typically go based on existing conditions.
Okay.
If the condition changed, and we did not do any modeling, we cannot do any modeling under different, you know, scenarios, we cannot.
Right.
We don't do projections at all.
Okay.
This is strictly based on existing conditions, how your existing infrastructure is being utilized by different loads of vehicles, strictly based on that, which is pretty much standard. I mean, every city in California, four hundred and eighty-two cities, they all go through the same process, then at the end, we come up with a proposed, a master plan, if you will, for truck routes. I mean, we did one, I presented one to the city council of Colton, not long ago, we've done one for South Pasadena. The procedure, the protocol is basically the same, except the location change, socioeconomically demographic, yeah, because of your general plan, they change, the zones change, but we only use the existing condition. So, for that specific area that you mentioned, maybe you have to wait a couple of years, the traffic conditions change, then that segment needs to be recounted, and then based on the existing data in the future, we designate that to be a truck route.
Okay, understood. Well, it, it's a great report, I appreciate it. I just, that was one thing that was jumping out at me, but thank you, appreciate it.
I know Joe actually hit on it, he mentioned, so this, uh, the, um, ordinance, when it comes before us, will actually include provisions for idling and parking as well as the actual route? Or is that gonna be a separate ordinance?
Yeah, commercial parking.
Yes, for the trucks.
Yeah, um, we, we discussed it at the planning, uh, public safety commission last time, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, I've been working with, uh, Lieutenant Forbes to do that. I think, uh, it makes sense, is that we get them together because, uh, at a time that we can all have holding together.
Agreed, thank you. I don't have anything else, uh, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I would so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bob.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Laramore.
Aye.
Mayor Tesari.
Aye.
Let's you pass this by, sir.
We'll move on to nine point six, appointment of the ad hoc committee for a draft truck route study.
Mayor, the city council is going to follow by, and our, uh, planning commission, uh, public safety commission meeting, Commissioner Flores, Vice Chair Perea, the Chair, and all of the chosen, the conference meeting last week, Vice Chair Relling, Commission Lead, Chair Fells, Fells, who was selected as an alternate, and, uh, we recommend to approve most selections for an ad hoc committee. There's also a provision for having two committee members serve. We had a Julie Rust here earlier that was asked, we should have prefaced it, we want one more, uh, member at large. Uh, the ad hoc committee members will probably need twice, depending on the level of understanding and where we go with this. Uh, there's also an ad hoc committee meeting that consists of, uh, the trucking interests in town, uh, Costco, Amazon, the campus, and the ranch. Uh, there's, that, I hope, we will also review the policy and the truck routes, and, uh, the consultant will also, uh, leave and, uh, talk to the neighboring cities, understand their traffic concerns, and, uh, following that, we see this, uh, recommendation from the ad hoc committees going back to the two commissions, then back to the city council in the form of ordinance, and they're after two readings, and then maybe six days after the readings, uh, it become, uh, it becomes a decision. And, uh, that's, uh, a recommendation.
Any questions?
There's, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no intention or thought of having city council members on the ad hoc committee or what's, what's the intention of the nature and the makeup of that committee? Or is there any?
There's no charge, I don't think there's that.
Are you volunteering?
I'm not, no, I'm not volunteering anybody, I'm just, I mean, when we talk about committees and logistics and, um, you know, applicability and how much staff time it takes, we're kinda committees of the wazoo sometimes.
Anyone else?
How many members do we have total? I mean, for this, for this ad hoc committee, what's the potential number of members that we're looking at?
Um, that's six members for this ad hoc committee.
There's a second.
The shareholders are beginning, there's probably gonna be, I'm guessing, the truck managers.
Got it. Good. So, it's primarily gonna be run by the planning commission?
Well, it's gonna be back to public safety.
Sounds like, and public safety.
Uh, for those, they'll be separate, they'll be separate meetings, uh, outside planning commission, public safety, safety meetings, a meeting will determine the best time to meet, and there'd certainly be an education process, uh, you know, get input and, uh, make sure there's a strong understanding of, uh, why the routes were selected, based on studies and based on community, the other cities. Um, and, you, the other cities, we'll have, have to agree, we're proposing also, uh, the Hamer and the Archibald, that's definitely like continuity through our city, in the neighboring cities, our east-west route, we can have our east-west route, but with Limonite that connects to the freeway, and what happens is we're forcing truck traffic potentially, we could say, Ontario, and so they would object.
It's a good idea.
For the east-west route, give us some rationale why the routes were chosen.
Anybody else, Mr. Mayor?
No, thank you.
Councilman Rigby?
Has there been much resident participation in, at the planning commission meetings or public safety commission meetings regarding this?
I haven't, uh, I don't have a secret on it.
Councilmember Rigby, at the, uh, public safety commission meetings, Julie Rust is, um, a frequent attender that, that has expressed, um, comments and concerns over truck routes.
My concern is kinda similar to Councilmember Rush's on, on this, just with proposing another committee. Um, is it really necessary? I mean...
I know it's late, um, I'll give a little bit of a history lesson, if anybody wants to indulge me. There, the, and I think it's the campus project. Why is everyone smiling? This is smart. Um, it's between Limonite and Sixty-Fifth, is that the campus? Yeah, okay. So, that was approved under a plot plan application with the county of Riverside, and it was like, it was, I think it was the last project, maybe one of the last projects that was approved by the county right before incorporation, and, uh, Mr. Simmons, Andrea, uh, Eileen Long, and a couple other folks that were involved in the beginning, attended that meeting and were very vocal as to the potential for truck impact, truck, uh, impacts, the industrial nature of the project, and, and that area was designated as industrial because of the airport, but with little freeway access, either you go north of Archibald, um, Limonite obviously doesn't extend through to Kimball yet, you know, the, the concern among the residents at the time was, everybody was gonna go back east towards, uh, the fifteen using Limonite. I think Dicky went out there and counted all of the, uh, stop signs, integration with pedestrian traffic and, and things of that nature. So, the project was approved with a condition of approval, and I'll never know if it came to fruition or not, that's where the idea kinda got started, to help fund a truck traffic, uh, truck route study, and now we're six and a half, seven years, uh, post from that development. So, that's kind of where it stemmed, from my experience, you know, with that area, now we have, you know, Walmart being proposed over there, um, a couple, the ranch and things of that nature. So, I don't know if there's still that resident interest involved, but kinda stemmed out of that, I don't wanna just put that aside and ignore it, so, I'll shut up now.
Anyone else? Well, I would, I would put it to the manager. What do you think? As far as staff, is this gonna place some undue burden, or is it something that you guys can handle relatively easily? I mean, this is a major, major quality of life issue. This, so, no, I mean, this, this, this truck route's very important, but I do not want trucks idling in certain places around the city, I don't want our streets getting torn up, but you know, when they, when they come to a quick stop at, you know, a red light and we roll up the pavement, I mean, there's, there's major issues, this is gonna impact us, so, I, I think it's very important, I'd like to see an ad hoc committee take things into account and get this thing ironed out, get everybody on board, and they have it done successfully and implemented in a way that's gonna best benefit the community. So, I, but, how's it gonna work for staff?
Uh, Mayor Tesari, we, um, that's kind of staff's reasoning and pro, proposing an ad hoc committee. We, this has been an ongoing discussion, uh, at the public safety commission level for roughly two-plus years now. Um, so, getting, you know, getting this off the ground and getting it moving forward was, was a priority to the commission and the recommendation to the council. Um, having stakeholder participation is important, um, and we didn't want to leave the residents out of that equation, and with that, you know, it's important to, to factor in how this ties into the know, it's important to, to factor in how this ties into the planning process, therefore, planning commission members, you know, public safety commission members, so I do feel that it's a valid ad hoc. It's, it's not, this is not a process that is anticipated to drag out for, you know, a year or two. It, I, I think this would be a short-term ad hoc committee of, you know, maybe two meetings, two or three meetings.
Well, seeing no reservations, I would, I would, um, recommend that we move forward. Do we need to appoint, uh, people right now? Do you guys have a list of who's gonna?
We, we were looking for the confirmation of, correct confirmation of the, uh, recommendations for appointment from Planning Commission and, I'm sorry? Oh, oh, yes, the other two people.
We can also allow, um, as in, uh, you, uh, we can choose, uh, we can contact again the residents who have been in the past, and, uh, and form the ad hoc, because the planning commission has been, uh, selected.
Okay.
And then also Public Safety Commission.
So all we'd have to do is make a motion to go ahead and approve the, uh, okay?
Who was the Public Safety?
Thank you.
Sir?
Public Safety is Vice Chair Oria and, uh, Commissioner Flores. What was that, Flores?
So, like, with the appointments, then on the other side you have Josh Lee and Howard Fain, correct? On the planning side?
Yeah.
And Charleston's altered it.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, within that group already, there's a lot of professional, you know, and their personal experience, professional experience, a lot of, that's a good, that's a good selection.
Yeah, Sean has, like I said, um, you know, professional experience with it. Uh, Josh is a friend of mine, he's a planner by trade, um, with Sandbag. They have, you know, San Bernardino County, and trucks are like, you know, hand in gloves, so I think, you know, well served there.
For example, you won't cry.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it was good representation there. I, I wouldn't be opposed necessarily to a, a citizen or two, um, as long as we're prudent.
Yeah, and if I could, wanted to follow up. Yes, thank you, sir. Wanted to follow up on, uh, two things. Um, one was mentioned about talking with other cities and their approval. I was looking at the map, are, are we talking, it, there are connecting, at least, it looks like they are existing designated truck routes. The only ones we don't have are Harupa Valley, i- is that right?
Right, uh, if we will touch base with, um, with Harupa Valley, the valley's still working on, uh, doing a truck route study, uh, this is a, uh, probably a whole day truck route, so, and a freeway off route. Um, and then to the north, uh, to contact the city of Ontario.
Okay.
And, uh, we're giving a little, and also Chino, and, and city of Oremo, so support city to contact you.
Okay, uh, well, I, I guess it, I don't know who came up with the, the key on this map, but it looks like those are already in place.
So, uh, you have, you have every city that their existing truck routes, with the exception of the city of Harupa Valley.
Of Harupa. Okay. And, um, I, I guess the, the next question, um, is what do we propose, and how do we reach out to them? Do we need their council approval, do we need staff, what?
Our consultant will reach out and make the contact, as per this contract.
Okay. Okay, all right. Excellent, thank you.
All right. I'd make a motion to go ahead and form the ad hoc committee. I'll second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protan, one more?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion, Council's vice.
All right, thank you. Well, we've come to an end. It's time for council communications, which I'm sure are gonna be really short. Mayor Protan?
Very short. Um, all right, so February thirteenth, there was a division meeting with the League of California Cities, took place in Wildamar, and many of you attended. It was a, a good event. February sixteenth, SCAG Bylaws Committee took place, um, and that was relatively, we had a number of bylaws come before the committee, but, uh, not many actually made it out. Um, February twenty-first, SCAG Legislative Communications Membership Committee, uh, had its meeting, and that was yesterday. And, um, again, it was really because all the bills were just introduced before, uh, in the state legislature, it's a matter of, uh, staff at SCAG getting their hands around that. Um, and so it was really just an update session. Uh, also, Eastvale Quarterly Town Hall Meeting took place last night, it was good, um, and a, a number of us were there. And upcoming meetings. So, uh, League of California Cities Board of Directors Meeting is gonna be taking place, uh, tomorrow and the day after, up in the lovely city of Lodi, and I will be participating in that. Um, also, if you have not already done so, uh, well, I guess in between now and the next meeting, SCAG Regional Council will be meeting, um, on March second, and I'll be there that day, and unfortunately missing some events here in town as a result. Lastly, this should have been forwarded to you, it's in your emails, and this is for the council, the SCAG General Assembly is gonna be taking place on May third and fourth. If you haven't, are already RSVP'd, please do so. Thank you.
Councilman Plot?
Yeah, tomorrow, we have the Riverside Transit Agency meeting, which Todd will be filling in for me. Um, and I just wanna make one comment in regards to, uh, the J C S D Parks and Commission, or Parks Commission. Uh, you know, we have the, a lot of the Little League starting, and we have Little League starting in a week and a half, we have so, the girls softball starting on Saturday, and, uh, I mean, we probably had the most incredible, you know, wet rainy weather, it's impacted our fields tremendously, and in essence made our, the dirt, you know, the, that kinda Indian sand dirt on the fields, just like cement. And so just kudos to J C S D, they've, they've gone out, and, uh, at least not for all of them, but where they, where the girls softball's gonna be playing, they've redone those, kinda the dirt on that field, at least make it softer so they can slide and not get hurt. So just kudos to that, 'cause it's, it's a lot of work that's in progress, and, and kind of in, you know, and they're smart, they actually waited over this weekend too, which is another smart move, to wait for that week to come, so, yeah, thanks again. I'll, I'll leave the rest of it for Todd, though, if you have any comments for J C S D, I'll leave that up to you, but, but, uh, thank you.
Councilman Ruby?
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up on Councilmember Plot, uh, with the Parks Commission meeting, um, one of the things that we did discuss was traffic and coordination between Silver Lakes and Eastville Community Park. Um, we did get a verbal commitment from J C S D that they will notify us, meaning the city staff and law enforcement, when there are coordinating events between the two parks that are causing an increase in, um, traffic in the, in the area. That was our, one of our big concerns, was traffic in the area, um, and our law enforcement not having a clue about the additional traffic. So hopefully they'll be coordinating with law enforcement on those. Um, they did also talk about a community garden that was proposed at Cedar Park. Um, the poll that they took showed, uh, it was an interesting poll, but it showed that people were, that residents were in favor of it by numbers, but by comments, were contradicting the numbers. Um, so it's one of those interesting things that they're still trying to, uh, we're still trying to figure out, it's gonna be brought back to, uh, the commission to see if they move forward with that. Um, one of the things that they did let us know is Symphony Park, the new D R Horton Development has churned that park over to J C S D, they're having a grand opening on March first. Um, on March eighteenth, there's an Eagle Scout project at American Heroes where they're installing the park benches.
It's the Barford kid?
I'm not sure who it was.
It's Nick Barford, yeah.
Yeah. Um, we had an Eastville Schools Committee Meeting. Once again, we also discussed traffic specifically here at this location, Rosa Parks. Uh, it was nice to see that they have quickly made, uh, measures to, uh, resolve that. Um, there are some things that we still need to, to discuss with them regarding the traffic. Uh, one of the things you'll notice as you leave here tonight, they started this week by making a no-left turn out of the parking lot here, and as you noticed, that's no-left turn at all hours, so, um...
He has a motor out there tonight.
One of the things they also discussed at the, uh, Schools Committee Meeting was regarding the Eastem Committee, Easten, I'm sorry, Eastem Academy, it's getting late.
'Cause it's the Eastville STEM Academy.
The STEM Academy, uh, just that they are gonna start doing dirt hauling out of there. Um, and one of the things, again, that they talked about was parking there. They have done studies, counts there, and on average, they've seen roughly close to two hundred parking spots that are still available. So I know on social media, it's been a concern of parents, but I think in reality, as administration and staff has done studies and counts there during school hours, during morning hours, after school bell, or after school's in session, there are adequate enough parking. We did recommend to them that if, once construction's underway and if there are parking issues, that they possibly coordinate with J C S D for workers to park off-site, um, and maybe carpool or something to the, the work site. The last thing at the Schools Committee, they did talk about the health screening, uh, event that took, recently took place, and that it was a great success, um, and just it was a great partnership with all that were involved, so, that's, oh, and last, I did promise earlier in the meeting this evening that we would have an update on, um, an ad hoc committee that we are working on currently for short-term tenancy rentals, I think is the, the official title. Uh, but we have recently interviewed applicants regarding that, and, uh, Councilmember Plot and I are in the process of, uh, reviewing the interview information, and we'll be making, um, selections to form that committee soon.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rush?
Thank you. I don't have much. We have R C T C Projects Committee next week. The, uh, council was updated on the aesthetic aspects of I fifteen. The meeting we were supposed to have today was canceled. Um, not really sure why, but it was rescheduled, so Flo tried to kick these things in gear. And then I received a question on, um, crossing guards, not crossing guards, excuse me, uh, crossing flashers for Rosa Parks and Aguirmeras, if something was in the works with respect to that, and we had that grant.
Those aren't, uh, crossing flashers, those are, um, uh, radar speed signs with, uh, flashing to notify you're entering a school zone.
Okay.
They're, they're not for crosswalks.
And is that, where, where are those gonna be placed?
Those, um, I'll let Joe's...
There's, there's ten locations, uh, from the culture going on the size, we have those , but, uh, I was almost happy to say we have like one or two.
Okay.
And, um, we have a map we can provide you.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind, to your convenience.
Your orders in place, you're just gonna need to remember, you know, I'd be interested in that.
Sounds good. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, the only thing I have is, Eastvale Kiwanis Club will be hosting, uh, Ring Doorbell at the Bootsma Ranch from eleven AM to two PM on Saturday. So anybody that's interested in getting one of those Ring Doorbells for their front door so that you can monitor it from your phone or your computer, that's the time to come out and get the discount pricing. So, Saturday, eleven AM. So our next meeting for the council is gonna be March eighth at six-thirty PM. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, I have to find it, I'll find it. I'll forget it, please. Here, actually...
She said that.
I don't know. These things all run for a week.
To ask her.
Not the photo one, but the actual camera one?
I had asked her to forward to me, everybody.
It's a neighbor of yours.
What neighbors is not gonna want?
Yeah.
Take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And they only have to monitor it. If something happens, you can...